Alright, here we are. It's tunnel meeting number 121. It's October 24th, 2024. And today we are joined by Ayo, Clement, Kiyamo, Onyeka, Onise, Coli, Karim, Kevin, Fotogi, Stephen and Vani. Thanks all for being here and sharing your time with us. And as you can see on screen, a little outline of the agenda. It's the monthly work group update call. So yeah, that's the bulk of the agenda. Start off with a couple of mentions. And then if there's time remaining on the clock, yeah, there might be open topics. And we'll start off with a quick reminder on what the ambassador program is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people all in tune with the Singularity Net ecosystem mission and vision. And we want to contribute to it. We do this in a wide range of self-organizing workgroups. And yeah, pretty much for any topic, we do have workgroups. So if you're interested in helping out, hop onto our Discord server. You'll find a how to join section. It will tell you how to join. Then a couple of mentions. Um, I was actually running into this slot, but there was quite a nice YouTube live on the RFPs for OpenCock Hyper Run. Strongly recommend checking that out. It's on the Singularity Net YouTube account. And we're squeezed between two pretty cool pieces of content. Because right after this, there will be the Iris X space right after the tunnel. Um, that's on X Twitter, however you want to call it. Do check it out. It's really interesting stuff. And to me personally, it feels like we're finally shifting from a bit pure research to actual concrete stuff you can play around with. And Iris is that to me. So I wanted to call that out. And there's also plenty of blogs, so you don't feel obliged to listen into its Twitter space. But do check out the project. And then a quick reminder for coming Thursday at 10 UTC. It's time for the monthly workgroup sinking call. Um, let me quickly, yeah, note this off. I need to add it to the calendars still. That's actually there, perfect. Although as other calls have been suffering from, it's at 11 UTC now. Let me change that. It's the week where the time shifted for, well, at least for Western Europe. So yeah, generic check. Make sure your workgroup meetings are still on the right time slot. Some shifted one hour, some didn't. It's just that week of the year, basically. I think we got most, but yeah. And then a quick shout out to the certification program. It's live. And I think Onyse is in the room. I think she's the most advanced currently within this certification program. There's a Discord channel for it and you can check that out. So yeah, Onyse, good stuff. I don't think, there's some prizes actually for the first people to complete it. I think right now you're, yeah, in the lead. But if I'm correct, it's not finished yet. So people can still run up and grab that first prize. It's actually 150 USD in AJX tokens. So might be an extra incentive there. And yeah, that's it as far as the mentions go. That brings us to the bulk of today's call. Quickly checking chats. Ah, Onyse actually filled that 15, so yeah, some work to go there. Um, I don't see Tevo in the room, I don't think. On the first page are all workgroups led by Tevo. A quick update on treasury side of things for those wondering. I was not present during the operations call today, but there was an issue with the bundling of the transactions. So I think this practically will mean the rewards will be delayed one week. And then next week will be a double session, basically. So if you're missing out on some rewards, don't fret, they will come. There will just be a week of delay. Bit unfortunate, but yeah. Even treasury exists of humans, can sometimes happen. And quickly checking if there's other things to update on these workgroups. If Tevo joins in a bit, we could still hop back to this. And that brings us to Strategy Guild. Let's see, who can I give the honors? I think it's Ayo.
Well, okay, I think, hi, everybody. Okay, so for starters, I think I would like to be seeing this just to know where on the agenda we are. So that we come prepared. I was not ready for that. I mean, I was ready generally, but I was not hoping that I would be called first. Okay, so for Strategy Guild, um, we, we have, we had four initiatives on the budget before budget fitting. And because of budget fitting, we're having to downsize to two, one research and then one workshop. We're hoping that because of some backlog from last quarter. So it wasn't just budget fitting for us, it was also quarter fitting. So we are hoping that maybe we would be able to have two researches and one workshop. But for the, for the research, the one that we brought from Q3, uh, we, we, it's ongoing. And the, on the timeline, it's supposed to be delivered mid-week, mid-month, November. Effium is not here. I said it was going to be entrusted, so otherwise it would have been the one to speak directly to that because he is in charge of that. But on timeline, I, uh, we are on schedule. So in two weeks to November, we'll have the research report ready. So it's be, uh, it's upcoming for November town hall. And I look to be interested because it speaks directly to what contributors and co-contributors expect Strategy Guild to be doing. You know, I mean, other than what Strategy Guild has been doing in terms of self-initiatives and all of that. So that's a good one. And for the workshop, the process for the workshop has started. The workshop was supposed to start first week in November, but we decided to bring it start earlier, one week to the end of October. Uh, we, the same thing that we did with outbound workgroups that was marketing guild, writers workgroup, video workgroup. The same thing that we are doing with workgroups that we call mid-bound. That is workgroups that does things that both impacts people within the ecosystem and then the people, the public generally. And this, this consists of just two workgroups. That's R and D Guild and then the Education Guild. So by, by this meeting, by the next meeting, by the next R and D and Education Guild meeting, you'll be getting visitors from Strategy Guild. Just to get them started doing what we did for writers and video and marketing guild at last quarter. So yeah, so that's, that's about updates from Strategy Guild. So it's three things, a workshop, our research and our budget and quarter fitting. So thank you. I hope I did not spend too much time. Thank you.
That was perfect. I do see the rest of the question for Coli, you're if you're on there.
Hey, Ayo, thank you for explaining that, but I do have a question for you. Um, what were the other projects that were done with the other workgroups? So what will be specifically done with our R and D?
Okay, alright, so for, for outbound workgroups like video writers and marketing guild. Yeah, what they are supposed to do is pretty much clear, right? I mean, nobody needs to tell a workgroup how to do what they do. But the idea at the time was that, I mean, writers workgroup had wonderful things that you were doing. Video had wonderful things you were doing. Marketing Guild had this very wonderful decentralized system of leadership. And we thought that we could have a workshop where we are able to put all of these wonderful things together and come up with solutions that otherwise might have been in our blind spots. And some of the things that, that came by because of this workshop was, for example, the content calendar, the, the brand, the brand guidelines, the, and then the community initiatives campaign that came from marketing guild. So without any particular increase in, in budget or anything, we have three workgroups that are able to increase impact just because there was a workshop. So we are looking at achieving similar results with Education and Research Guild. The beautiful thing about, about this whole thing was that it did not even have anything to do with, with us in the sense of we want, it was not our ideas. It was everybody's ideas. This came from members of work of those workgroups. Alright, so I think Society Guild was just able to coordinate. And then, and then also for the obvious reason that, I mean, Society Guild has the budget for that. So, so maybe it would have been a tough one if writers were like, were to, for example, have to be the one to sponsor that in that sense. So we are looking at the same thing for R and D and for education, yeah, work, workgroup, I mean guilds. I hope that answered your question, Coli.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, Ayo.
Alright, thank you.
Nice. Alright, now for the questions, it looks like. So moving on, and that brings us to Governance Workgroup and Open Governance Office Sessions. Uh, it's a bit of a decentralized group, like there's no dedicated leader. Usually I put Vanessa on the spot, not sure if you're quite up for that right now.
Oh gosh, I hadn't really thought about what we need to say. Um, I suppose what we could say is that over the last month, right at the start of the month, we had a bit of a session looking at what we need to talk about for the forthcoming meetings. So we have had a little bit of a structure in place of the topics that we need to cover. We made a bit of a decision on what we think the timeline should be for the next budget decision process for quarter one, 2025. And we should probably kind of publicize that a little bit more just to check that everyone's okay with it. But we're currently thinking that budgets and quarterly reports would need to be submitted on the 25th, I think it was, of November. This is basically because Christmas and because we'll need to get things in, in time so that people can have a proper Christmas holiday. So yeah, we, I think we do need to share that a little bit more and just make sure that all the workgroups are okay with it. But yeah, the decision has been taken that this decision process will again be a consent process with some refinements that we're working on. But there's quite a lot of impetus wanting to look at experimenting with other decision-making methodologies. We recognize that we're probably not ready to do that just yet. So we're looking, we're aiming to look at that for quarter two, 2025, which sounds like a ridiculously long way off now, but it will be on us before we know it. In the meeting that's just gone today, we were talking about what is indeed a valid objection? And some really interesting things came out and we'll be kind of picking up that conversation on Thursday. So anyone who's interested in the whole governance process and how we make decisions, come and join us. It's about all I can think of.
I would say it's spot on. Um, yeah. Yeah, just a little call out there if there's any items you feel that should be on, on the agenda for, for, for the governance workgroup. There's a rolling agenda document, you can find it in the Discord channel, the governance channel. Um, and it's open for everyone, anyone to, to add agenda items they feel should be touched on. There's a bit of a list as Vanessa explained. Yeah, we mapped out a little bit in the future already what we need to discuss. But it's very much open to additional input. Alright, um, yeah, thanks Vanessa. That brings us to onboarding. Let's see who we have in the room. Not sure who to ask.
Hi, Pita. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see. All yours?
Yeah. Please confirm you can hear me.
Yep, all good.
Okay, great. So for onboarding, we have a couple of things that we have covered. And the first one would be, you know, we're able to successfully do GitHub training. Um, I haven't gotten the slides, but like the moment I get the slides, I'll definitely share with everyone. The GitHub project management training that was done successfully. And then we have an upcoming training. As, and the upcoming training is M and E, monitoring and evaluation. And then an introduction to decentralized governance. And I believe it's open for all. So like, this is an open invitation for everybody to be a part of the training. Then we changed our meeting times. We are now meeting fortnightly instead of weekly. And, um, yeah, then we have the onboarding journeys. Yes, please, quick announcements. I've shared like a survey for, if you feel like, if you, okay, yeah, I've gotten the slides. If you feel like the, the infographics. So I'd shared during the week, we had shared, the onboarding group had shared the updates on the infographics in the general group, in the general channel. And basically just highlighting, I think like four major challenges that new people and new co-contributors, you know, have when entering to the program. And then we added a survey so that people could like speak, you know, and anonymous people could like speak about the issues they were having. There was one response that really got to me. I think the one we've had so far was someone saying, you know, they felt alone or they feel alone in, in the community. And that's an issue that hasn't been addressed. So yeah, I think it's a great way to just know what's happening in the minds of new people and even contributors in the, in the ecosystem. And yeah, then infographics are in the general group. So yes, please, um, just inviting all of us to take a look at them and go over them. And also if we have anything that wasn't vocalized, you could share on the survey. Um, yeah, I think that's mostly it. I'll be sharing the, the GitHub training slides right away.
Nice, thanks a lot. Um, yeah, if I don't see any answer by you, I assume there's no questions and I'll move on. And that brings us to archival workgroup. And we have Stephen in the house, we have Vanessa in the house, not sure.
I can pick this one off, I think. Um, yeah, so Archives Workgroup. This quarter, we have moved from fortnightly meetings to monthly meetings because most of the work we're doing is kind of async and individual or in small teams. And it actually seems to be working quite well. So it's useful maybe for people to know that this is something in certain circumstances that you can do and it works. And on that, our next meeting is a week tomorrow, that's Wednesday, the sixth. And now that the clocks have gone back, we're at 13:00 UTC. So this month, there's been quite a lot of work on archive maintenance and catching up with adding meeting summaries. And this has been a bit of a slow process, partly because we're in the process of a bit of a redesign. So there's been a glitch or two here and there. But also just there seems to have been a lot of correction needed lately. Um, and also some workgroups, you might get a message from us soon checking up on missing summaries. So yeah, basically it means that we are doing quite a lot of thinking in terms of the redesign of the summary tool. And one thing we've noticed is we kind of want to get rid of the word narrative. A lot of the templates have a meeting narrative and it seems to prompt, excuse me. It seem.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry, it seems to prompt people to give unnecessary details. Um, sorry, I'll have to hop off a sec.
Yeah, go grab some water, no worries. Alright, so.
Alright, um, back, back in the room. Yeah, so we're looking at which fields and which style of summary template is producing the clearest and the most kind of information-dense summaries. We've also been working quite a bit on our research on the value of a RAG retrieval process in record keeping and archiving. And one of the things we're looking for is how far an LLM really can be constrained to use specific sources only. And also whether it can be trained to say it doesn't know if the sources it's given don't hold the info it was asked for. Given that most LLMs are kind of created to try and infer or even invent an answer based on training data that it's given and not to say that they don't know on kind of pain of death. So we think ethically, it's really important if an LLM can say, sorry, I don't have that information. Um, we're also looking quite a lot at what types of questions an organization like the ambassador program is likely to need to ask of its records. We've been noticing that one of the key things is likely to be the tracking of decision-making. Being able to use the archives to find out what has been decided about whatever it is and when and by whom. So yeah, that's all really interesting and at quite an interesting stage at the moment. We're also planning to do a town hall session at some point in November on our approach to an open source ethos in record keeping, which I know is something that is going to interest quite a lot of people because this community, there's always a strong commitment to open source working. So I hope people will keep an eye out for that. And meanwhile, you can always have a look at our GitHub board, which I've just put in the chat. That's about all for us.
Nice, thanks a lot. Quickly reading up. Kiyamo thinks you won on the bet, it's just not the case. Um, cool, yeah, thanks. Um, well, speaking of Kiyamo, um, next one on the list is the Latam Guild. Do let me know if you need any screen shares and stuff.
Yeah, I will, and I think you'll host me already, so I'm gonna just go for it. Okay. Yeah. Okay, thumbs up when you see my screen, amigo. You do now?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, let's go for it. So there was a bunch of stuff done this, this month. Um, we have this presentation that we will keep using monthly because it's sometimes it's better when we do a lot of content the proper way. Um, so we start a month ago during our own calendar. Uh, as we are starting to have three meetings, weekly or bi-weekly, it really depends on the objectives we have. Um, so this is how it's been shared on our media platforms. Uh, this is last week. Uh, you can see we have a pretty busy week. And you're going to see how that calendar matched with objectives we have been aiming for this month. First of all, the members collective. So we kept pushing this last month. Uh, we have, it was pretty busy for one of our ambassadors, Martin. Um, we have this, we announced last month, our participation in this amazing event that is called Nerdiarla. A huge, huge, it was a 10-year anniversary. And now they're going to Mexico and we're going to have other representative there next week. But you can see the amount of people. Uh, we did interviews, we did some video, we did, we share a lot of content in our platforms, we do a lot of networking. Um, big, big event sponsored by GitHub, Google, big, big brands. Um, so yeah, it was great. We onboarded some new members to our channels and yeah, you're going to see later on the, the, as you can see, we verify they also had Twitter accounts. So now we have the analytics, you're going to see how this impacted our numbers. Uh, so that was nice and something that we did this month. Uh, a lot of developers, a lot of people we have, we are going to be onboarding, hopefully to the RFPs, OpenCock, to the meta and to now the newly announced Hackathon for deep funding. And of course, Round 5. Um, and also on our own initiatives, you know. And of course, we will be introducing to the ecosystem and all the other spinoffs um, from the Singularity Net and also from now the big family that we are part of, the ASILs. And the other event, it was Tech Forum. Uh, this was another big event. This was more based on government and, and business, corporate, the second one, the one I'm sharing now. Uh, and we did have a, so they invited us, the organizers, government people. Uh, we have a visit from our, another family member that is Jerry from Hypercycle. We onboarded people from Gamechanger, well, TX5, they are already members of the Snet Latam and Singularity Net as they have participated in the funding round two or three. Uh, but now we have some developments on the pipeline and some great ideas that we'll be sharing shortly when we have something complete to share. There was Charles Hoskinson again in Argentina, big Asado lover. He's been eating meat and drinking wine for the last, I think, few months here. Uh, getting bigger and bigger every day. Um, same as Jerry, I can, I can tell that. Uh, president, a lot of, again, government and a lot of members from other chains. We have people from Polcador. So it was really, really nice, all the networking, networking we have been doing as we are a multi-chain platform. Um, a lot, a lot of people in the room. Really nice. Then we have a meet also the Cardano family from Latam. There was Mauro with a big announcement on regards of introducing a legal contract with blockchain on Cardano. Uh, hopefully we can introduce a FETC AR or Snet bot on figuring out how to address this or help with this idea. Uh, but probably something we can discuss later. Uh, there was a big, big barbecue. We weren't there because it was mom's day, so we, myself and friends were at the river. But our ambassadors were president here. Uh, yeah, getting drunk with Charles at some big barbecue. Uh, upcoming, there's this other big, big event next week. I think the picture is coming, let me see, yeah. La BitConf, the BitConf will be locally. This is, I think it's by the end of this week, Friday, Saturday, next week. And on this one, we have been confirmed, we are going to be on stage like we did on the Alef. Remember that, that big event, we have Pop-Up City. It was a one-month event, where this is the oldest event on blockchain and decentralized technology in Buenos Aires. It has also almost 10 years or more, I think 12 years. Uh, it's going to be in a big building, Costa Salguero is a nice auditorium. And we have been confirmed, hopefully this didn't change. So Martin, our DSI specialist, so he's a PSG part of the Snet Latam ambassador guild. Um, he's going to be on stage. So we are presenting a big rejuvenate. Yeah, pitch, we're going to pitch the, the business and we're going to pitch Singularity Net and also invite members to participate on the next, uh, deep funding, yeah, onboarding, another big objective of these efforts. Um, let me go for the next one. Okay, the other thing we did, uh, we started this initiative, we just jump-started. We didn't thought about it too much. Uh, we just went for it and it worked. Uh, we have the two first spaces this month of October. We, well, we shared this initiative last month update. Uh, the idea is to use the platform. Uh, the idea is to use the platform. Okay, it's pretty powerful algorithm. We we got, we got some cool attention, you know, we have a lot of onboarding on, on this platform, as you're gonna see at the end, on, on the analytics. And we did the experiment of the first one following our, um, AGI, no, AGI twenty-four roundtable discussion or topic, AI human collaboration. Because we personally, my favorite, so we, we know a lot. It was a great discussion. Uh, and we did, we are, we are planning this bi-weekly. So on the second one, on the twenty-four of October, last week, last Thursday, we did our version of the ecosystem update in Spanish. So it was the Latam edit of the ecosystem update that, um, uh, happens bi-weekly, but lead by Haley, Peter and, well, all the leads of the spin offs. We did it with all the leads of the spin off, we just did it ourselves. Uh, we did the script that we follow. Um, and Sergio and Martin lead this. We follow the roundup, uh, blog uh, from Singularity Net that Ines translates. So we picked the subjects. And if you follow later on the, uh, the links on the, on the X platform, we have a a lot of, so we were embedding all this data on the, on the comments on, on the space. So we were able to create a big, uh, threat with all those topics we discussed. We created this, uh, infographic for, uh, call to action. Um, this is the first space. We have people from Ethereum, you know, on this platform, people come see and out. We have a lot, a total of two hundred and forty-five connections and a total of four hundred and seventy-eight views. I don't know how accurate this is, you know, uh, there's a lot of bots, there's a lot of, you know, AKA. Uh, but this is what, if you hit on the space, this is the information that is there. Um. And on the second one, that we did the update, the ecosystem update, it was lower, uh, connections and views. Uh, but as it was the first experience with the ecosystem update, uh, probably it was for the better. Um, next, November, we're going to go with a second, well, the third and four. Uh, we're gonna do a big one on Juve AI, uh, bio technology, lead by Martin, uh, so all DSI and AI impacting, uh, health. Uh. Well, and that's, that's it. We're gonna go next week. Uh, so everybody is invited next Thursday. Uh, Ines and Martin are gonna be leading that one and I'm gonna be joining Sergio on the twenty-one for the bi-weekly ecosystem. Uh, it was fun. We started with music. Um, and then lastly, I promise I'm gonna go fast because also I need to jump off, um, to pick up, uh, France from school. We have this, we shared this last time. I, I did wanna share this with you guys because we need to learn from this experience. We have been invited to, to uh, to help, uh, Singularity Net, uh, the ASI Alliance and also Fetch. Uh, we didn't have, uh, too much of a time to prepare. Peter was involved in, in the, always in the, in the loop. Uh, so some people from the foundation, Rob, Thiago, that is kind of business corporate of Strategy Alliance, they brought this idea. ASI was participating, uh, as sponsor on the Copa America, uh, Solana Copa America. Uh, it was pretty cool. Uh, what they did totally radical or, or kind of fun and creative. Uh, we participate again, uh, as the ASI Alliance with a special AI truck, okay? Trying to integrate our technology, Fetch and Snet into Solana. And again, building, uh, partnership with our chains. Um, we have a pretty prepared hackback from the Fetch AI. I'm gonna drop this presentation there, so you have all this. This is something we need to learn how to prepare and execute, uh, uh, virtual Hackathon. Uh, it was pretty amazing, the, the team from Fetch, amazing, the tech people. They create this, we follow, we create a, the second step was to share all this information. We put a live stream uh, workshop with, uh, one of the techs from Fetch. Uh, so all teams will, were, were able to go back to this video where we share uh, models in a, in a GitHub repo, uh, with the models and an example and give them guidelines on how to execute this. Uh, then, uh, a channel to communicate with community and developers uh, that we were moderating in Portuguese and Spanish. We have, uh, I think six teams or five teams engaging, three final proposals, this in the and I think it was not even one week or two weeks that we were able to communicate. Uh, the call to action, it was pretty, uh, you know, let's go, do it. Um, we did have a strong communication. Uh, and you see what happened, you know, it, it, they took a football format. So they impacted on a region that is football, one-on-one. Uh, so every nation, every country participated with their colors, with their flags. It was like a, a world championship for football, okay? So Brazil, Argentina, Colombia, Venezuela, with this topic, with this, uh, it was pretty, pretty fun, cool. And then the other thing that it was really nice. Um. Well, when we changed the date, we impacted with memes. We, we did a meme campaign on extending their dates, you know, you know how we love developers. Uh, one more week or five days for, to develop and fi- and finish the proposals. Uh, but this is what I wanna show you. So imagine the World Cup of, uh, within a Hackathon. All teams and projects going through, uh, like, yeah, like a football championship. Uh, this happened online, real time. So teams were pitching and having this engagement online with other teams. And they were, so we have a quarterfinals. Now we are in, we went through semifinals. Uh, and the final is this, uh, I think tomorrow. Okay. Um, so this was live, happening live. Uh, what is the name of the platform? Uh, Peter, I forgot, uh, Streamyard. Uh, impacting on, on YouTube. So teams were pitching while there were being cheered by their, uh, you know, the fans or the team members on the chat on YouTube. So this is, this is kind of, you know, it was nice. It was pretty innovative. Um, they were able to crack code online, uh, you know, sharing screens. So it was pretty amazing. Um. Yeah, so it was nice to follow and learn from the, the team. This is happening tomorrow. Probably it's nice if you guys can join and watch this happen because it's pretty amazing that we learned, uh, from this experience. That's one day we're gonna be doing our own. Um, then to close, I'm sorry, I'm going too long. This, um, yes, there's Latam Meta Lab, uh, you're gonna have more details also on the R and D presentation that Clement is gonna later, uh, go through. We already have an idea on a team. Andres, uh, is already reading the proposal and the program, Suarez from the Snet. Uh, yeah, we, we went through this last, last time. We have a short roadmap and we will try to deploy uh, and launch this first quarter next year. Uh, we did a surveys for this. Uh, of the R and D, we have six, six responses already. And we did this in Spanish and Portuguese. We have already three responses. Uh, so we need to create a campaign to push this out. Uh, probably to have more engagement. Um, lastly, this, uh, also that it's, this represent our, our effort. Uh, uh, we have a four hundred, so six hundred and eighteen increment in followers. Uh, you can see the engagement here. We have impressions for thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. This is just X. And, um, this is because we were, this day, nineteen of October is the day we were the, of the Tech Forum. So, uh, outreach in works. Uh, so this is for the African, uh, Guild family that we are going through our retrospective. It does work. Um. We, well, yeah, I put this down, but then I, I don't wanna bore you with this, but this is kind of a, a good result, you know, uh, and, and this shows our work. We have a lot of engagement in this platform. Uh, so yeah, so this is a good result to share. Um. So yeah, hopefully we have more, uh, to share next month. Sorry, I went too long.
No worries there. Uh, yes, you did grossly over time, but at the same time, you're, uh, yeah, truly a guiding example on a regional initiative that's, you're just nailing it. It's, it's amazing to see. So also happy to give you, uh, plenty of time to, well, share the results, um, of all that work. So yeah, great stuff all around.
Okay, thank you, mate. Uh, let's go.
Was a, a quick question, uh, before you, I, I know you need to go. Um, on the recordings of these X spaces, usually they're just on the, on the X account itself. Are, are these recorded?
Yeah, yeah, they, you know, they, they just stay there. You go through the feed, you can go back there. And of course, we are looking forward to have a hybrid, you know, uh, by, uh, you guys talk about our community in English, we can, you know, we are planning on extending this in Portuguese. But you know, we have already too much on the table, so let's, just a short, big, uh, and bold, bold match, but one other time.
Cool. All right. Um, yeah, thanks again. Well, we'll back to screen share. Uh, I do know next on the list, um, I think I can just immediately stop sharing again for the, um, we go to the R and D Guilds with Clement, which I believe you had a presentation as well, right?
Yeah, uh, amigo, you still open to sharing screen?
Yeah, I can do that for you, mate. Um, I'm, I'm gonna drop it. I'm gonna need to jump off. I'm gonna drop the link on the, Peter, can you, can you share the screen for, for Clement, please? Okay, give me a minute. Yeah, Papa. There you go.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Peter, please, you could help me, uh, put that up.
Should be good now?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Guillermo, for, uh, helping put this up, yeah. So good evening, everyone, uh, once again, and I'll just be uh, having a run through of the monthly reports for the R and D Guild, yeah. So, uh, next slide. Yeah, next slide. Yeah. So one of the first things I'd like for us to talk about is the Collaboration Skills Database. I, I think that this was presented um, fully in, uh, a couple of meetings uh, sessions ago, you know, the town hall here. So, um, the project like it's here initially was supposed to have been carried out by Curtis, you know, but then a couple of challenges came in and, uh, interestingly, we had, uh, Advance and AJ, you know, uh, coming up to uh, finish up this tax. And we, we did make this presentation and, and I mean, there's a link there for people to go check out the demo in the chat. Yeah, if you set up the slides, there's a link there and I think it's clickable, yeah. So. Yeah, for once of time, yeah, please, uh, next slide, yep. Yeah, and then something else we've been working on, uh, a research um, around the impact of lingual differences. Of course, and then, um, we, the team here has been able to put in hundred percent deliverables on this research and, uh, both, both, um, in an online and offline fashion. Yeah, and then there's also a link, um, to the R and D repo where people can go, um, check this up. Interesting thing is, um, these deliverables are already being, uh, curated to push them into the next level, which is, uh, the tooling phase, of course. And then, uh, in coming months, uh, we'll be developing something in that regard as well. Um, from the output that's, you know, generated from this, uh, initial research. Yeah, next slide, please. Yep, thank you, Peter. Yeah, yeah, and this is, uh, just around, uh, the the new operation system for the R and D Guild, you know, because, um, originally, we, we put, we put up projects and people get to vote. The guild gets to vote, you know, just within the guild, you get to select and then, uh, we get to fund these projects that most of them in the research phase, the addition phase, most of them, you know, the tooling phase, right? So this time around, we had, uh, just a slight tweak into the sys-, uh, into the, uh, the lead out system. And I think, um, interesting part is that it did allow. Sorry, is that for me in the chat, Peter?
No, just in general.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, so, um, yeah, so we just did a slight tweak. First, it did accommodate, um, every other core contributor within the program and getting power to decide, uh, the projects which the R and D Guild were gonna be funding for this quarter. Yes, and, uh, gave everybody much of a level playing field here, to be very honest. Yeah, next slide. Yes, so, uh, we, we had twenty-six contributors, you know, getting involved in the process, um, the highest recorded, uh, so far, most likely. Yeah, and then, uh, we had a voting period that extended from the September eighteenth to the October first. Yeah, and then we did, we, we did record around the fifty-four, uh, positive votes. Yeah, to the proposals. Yep, next slide, Peter. Yeah, and then, of course, so, um, one of the systems which we did introduce is the fact that we just allowed, uh, positive voting. So you just had to select that you wanted these proposals to go for it. You know, uh, there was no downvoting, yeah, because we're trying to, we need, uh, people. If, so somehow, at, at some point, you know, it, it was some sort of a competitive process, um, however you may see it. So we just, um, made a hard stop at people just selecting the proposals that get funded. And that was basically that. So there was no room for downvoting. So people don't get to suppress other people's, uh, uh, proposals and then just, uh, allow theirs alone to get positive votes. Yeah, we're trying to eliminate this bias. And then we introduced some criteria, um, where for a proposal to be considered, at least all proposals must have at least, uh, thirty to forty percent participation quorum from the core contributors. That's only twenty-six people who were voting. Yeah, and then, uh, we slightly tweaked this for complex projects, you know, um, that they require at least sixty to seventy percent quorum from all core contributors that actually voted on that. Yeah, and, uh, so in this case, where, um, multiple proposals that more than one, two, three, four, five, you know, exceeded the percentage threshold, that all of them had sixty, seventy percent quorum. Then we looked at the, um, top scoring proposals, you know, and we selected the reason available resources um, as much as the guild can provide and then the priority. Yeah. Next slide. So we set out, uh, uh, there were four proposals actually, um, on the voting form, uh, the first being the research on the master program participation and AI discussions and blockchain preferences within Singularity Net's ecosystem. Then we had the one around, uh, contributors portal integrations by Rojo and, uh, legacy, uh, version oh point one by Kenichi. And then we've got the consensus dashboard for quarterly reports and budgets. So this were the proposals that are actually present on the voting form during the voting phase. Yeah, next slide. Yeah, so, uh, this had a total of, uh, six votes. Yeah, six votes, the first proposal and this, uh, I think everyone did get positive on this. Something, uh, in total, accounting for over one hundred percent. I think everyone did find this appealing. Yeah, and then the next. Yes, so we had fourteen votes, um, on this, people does, people, I think we had fifteen impressions there and then one didn't vote. So we had fourteen votes and then this also had, uh, uh, seventeen votes as well. Yeah. So, uh, yeah, next slide, Peter. Yeah, so, uh, like, like we said, you know, we, we, we did big thresholds and, uh, unfortunately, we, we had to just go with, uh, the three proposals that made the criteria that we stated earlier. So Kenichi's, Rojo and Guillermo's proposals uh, did go through and are currently on a winner. Some level of progress, yeah, as we speak. Yeah, and then, um, something we introduced, I think Guillermo did speak about it. Some level of progress, yeah, as we speak. Yeah, and then um something we introduced, I think Guillermo did speak about it's uh. For Latam as well, the Meta Code Labs, yeah, and. The the essence is to. Provide hands-on training with no cognitive competitions and AGI-focused development. Most importantly, I think at level of the guild, we. Agreed to um, you know, modify approach to ensure that it doesn't sound too too technical, even if, of course, it's it's a core technical exercise. So that we call people who um although they may not be deep deep into development itself in terms of skills and experience, but. They are at least able to, you know, um get along, you know, tag along, because I mean, the sessions are open to anyone and we don't want someone. Uh getting into the session and then just getting bored about uh too many technical concepts flying around, yeah. Next slide. Yeah, so um we did um set up um a format for how we're gonna go. And the first was um introduction to the atom space and. Multiple rigidity, and then we also will be looking at exploring several education and type systems. And then would also be introducing uh. The people to neuralic symbolic integration and inference engine. And then building AGI with meta and open cock hyper and of course, sounding quite technical. Yes, next slide, Peter. Said to rush you over this. Yeah, so we did, we did uh provide um some sort of a. Survey for people to, you know, access their familiarity with the meta language and hyperco- uh hyperon framework. You know, and to get their experiences around um it, that's for people who already uh are developing on this already. And also to get the availability of people, so we can set a time where people can, you know, all come together to have um these sessions. Yep, next slide. Yeah, so that's uh pretty much that's um I'll stop there. I think we're really. Um first for time, yeah. So thank you very much, everyone.
And you, good stuff. Uh sorry, let me just got lost a little bit in my browser. I see we already passed the top of the hour. Um. I guess that's what you got with um these. Yeah, a bit on the long side presentations. I I do like the updates. Um at the same time, yeah, there's uh just limited amount of time. Uh and then I'm also slow finding the rights. All right, we did that one, uh because there's quite a bit more. Um that'd be six. Then that brings us at AI ethics. Let's see, uh Vanessa?
Righty ho, um yeah, um so this quarter, again, this is another work group that's moved from fortnightly meetings to monthly. Partly due to the requirements of budget fitting, but also just because most of the work we're doing is async at the moment. And it seems to be working out really well, although for other work groups who might be thinking of making that transition. We found that we really need the admin roles that we have to support async work. You need a couple of people in place. To check in with people and keep everyone up to date. Um on the topic of meetings, our next meeting is this coming Monday on the fourth of November at fourteen hundred UTC, and it's on the calendar. So this month, we focused mostly on interviewing the public on their thoughts about the ethical development of AI. And the interviewees have been selected by workgroup members amongst their friends, families, contacts, um colleagues. And what's been really nice is that the range of people we've got in the workgroup has meant we've got a really good range of different interviewees. So far, we've had over thirty interviews that have come in. And obviously, with lots of different kinds of people from different backgrounds and with different levels of knowledge about AI, which is really brilliant. We're kind of covering the whole range of different um levels of knowledge. But I think we're sort of focusing a little bit on people who are not AI professionals. And who maybe don't have that many other ways to make their voices heard. So it feels really good to be doing that. And also, the interviewers themselves are functioning as something of a sort of test group to help us to refine. A really robust interview methodology. And it raises interesting issues about things like how we collect demographic info. To help us identify whether different groups of people, like, I don't know, young people, old people, people in specific countries. Have any shared perspectives on AI ethics that we can identify when we come to analyze the stuff. And it also raises interesting knowledge management issues, how we store and manage the information that we're getting. In ways that preserve data privacy, but also support open source principles as far as possible. And we've also been starting to work on organizing, sharing the G E I survey. Um again, at this stage via people's personal networks and contacts. So that's something that rather than being an interviewer, an interviewee relationship, it's just a survey link that we give to people. They go away and complete it in their own time. So it'll be interesting to see if the information we get is of a different character. Because people are doing it in their own way and in their own time. And the other thing that I should probably mention is the BGI book group, which kicked off a couple of weeks ago and is led by Lulu. It's obviously, it's not an AI ethics work group initiative, but we are kind of connected with it. And it's basically going through in detail and discussing Ben Gerzels' book, The Consciousness Explosion. And the next session is tomorrow, eighteen thirty UTC, and the link's on the calendar. So that's about all from us. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. And that does cover uh the Global Ethics Initiative, which I believe I should update the name. I'm not super sure if it's settled on.
It was, it was begin, and now we think it's global AI access. But yeah, we'll keep you posted.
Yes, yeah, great stuff. Yeah, tomorrow's uh chapter one on the book club. So you still have chance to start. The PDF is available and uh yeah, then you can join. Um, all right, I see this uh slide is not up to date because I don't think we should be doing archive work group again. Um so that lets us move to education. Uh let's see who we have in the room. Representing. Anyone, feel free to unmute and speak. Perhaps the intention was for SA to give this update. She did reach out to me uh right before the town hall uh calling out she couldn't make it through some urgent issue. So if we don't have a representative, I I think I did call out the, yeah, the certification program. Uh that would be the main call to action, I imagine. So I think I'll just mention that again and then for now, that would be it. Um then next on the list is AI Sandbox and Think Tank. Who do we have in the room?
Good everyone.
Yes, we can, flourish yours.
All right, thanks for that, Peter. So um for AI Sandbox and Think Tank, um we just, we selected the. Work group itself. Um this month, we went through the first meeting, we went through the blueprint. Uh we looked at the objectives, we looked at the uh the goals and the how we plan to achieve them. Uh the second meeting, we had the first sandbox session, where we looked at the templates, then prepared for AI. Two exhibitions, uh we share that in chat. So anyone that's tried and given an exhibition can um follow the template. And uh reach out to us and you will encounter the slots in one of our sandbox sessions. So for Think Tank, uh. We had in the last call, we had uh a roundtable discussion on the AI and the future of work. Just an interactive session where everyone shared their opinions and views. Uh and going forward, we plan on having a theoretical debate. On the the impact of AI in education. So it's gonna be an interactive session, it's gonna be a fun session. Um hopefully, um it's gonna take place the upper Thursday, um twelve UTC. So uh please do well to come in and um and and interact with us, basically. Uh uh going forward, would have of uh a presentation by Clement. For uh the next sandbox session and uh we are still looking on having a virtual analysis. And exploring the knowledge graphs. So um feel free to open in any of our calls. We have a s- sandbox by weekly and then think tank simultaneously. So we have sandbox this week, we have think tank the next week. And they are all at on Thursday, um twelve UTC. So that's it from AI Sandbox and Think Tank. I will share the link to the um Kamba slide presentation, the template for AI uh. AI two exhibition for you guys. That'll be for myself.
Thanks a lot for that. And quickly checking the calendar, I got reminded about earlier today where we said uh we would figure out the the meeting uh. Getting it properly onto the calendar. Still have to do that.
Yeah, thanks for that.
All right, thanks. Uh then uh last but not least, we get to the gamers guild. It's late in the room or perhaps another representative? Don't see nobody raising their hands or muting, so not quite sure.
Okay, let me, let me give a short presentation for gamers guild, uh though I'm not prepared for it. So so um for gamers guild, uh we are currently working on some workgroups. We finished uh development of the treasury system, the treasury workgroup. Um it's now we're working on the animation and um and and the scripting for treasury, for treasury guild. And uh we have the work prepare in place, is under development. We also have um. We also have the R and D Guild, and currently we're working on uh writers' workbook. So we're trying to um create this then departments in the VR for the ambassador program. And uh we are also working on some um phone mapping for the game itself. And um once that is ready, uh uh I will share that. But this is just a short.
Nice and concise. Thanks a lot stepping up there. Uh oh, I was missing one slide. We're not done yet. It's twelve past now. I'm I'm very sorry running over the time slot. Um at the same time, I do want to give uh, yeah, there's there's no sense in skipping for work groups. So um perhaps we could do it at one point two speed, and that would help a little already. Uh starting off with um Marketing Guild. I see. Are you turning on a camera?
Yeah, yeah. Um I don't have to present, but I can just. There's um I have a document here, so. I will just um read from it, or more or less just speak from it. All right, so yeah, um thank you, guys. Um I hope that we are not all tired. I feel like, I feel like, I mean, I was hoping that it wouldn't take this long. All right, so for Marketing Guild, we have um about four things. To report, it's been a very busy quarter. Uh uh we are, we are beginning to consolidate all the things that we started. In Q three, I mean, Q three being the quarter that we got back and, you know, got things in shape. So. Uh for, for the initiative, we have the Zillow, uh Zilots. Podcasts uh proposed and in progress. And um we are looking to um involve um. Head of spinoffs and um. Have conversations around um Snets and um various uh solutions in the in the ecosystem. So yeah, that's going on well. And then the mascot campaign was launched and uh we had total of ten submissions. And the top three had been selected. And so that was a very successful, successful outing. And we also have the committee engagement initiative, which was also launched, and we have um several responses, about um seven feedbacks. And uh it's closing tomorrow, thirty eighth of uh October. So if anybody um has any. Um any idea that you'd like to pitch in, uh this is have twenty four hours to to do that. And then we have uh another um milestone that we've achieved is the. Did you know content, which is, I mean, one of our initiative to revamp and modify um. Community engagement. So we we've been able to achieve that. And then uh finally, the content calendar is um underway. Uh presently, we have um. Uh a marketing task, task force member going around workgroups to get workgroups to. Um have two people who represent the workgroup in the content calendar. Access to the content calendar form, so that um when, if and when workgroups need to. Put something on social media, there's somebody who is there to help them have submitted, so that. We can have unified fronts in our social media posting. And then so that we can also um check for quality. To make sure that the brand um guidelines are followed. And so, yeah. Uh yeah, I think that's that's about it from Marketing Guild. So um. Yeah, so we're expecting that uh by next uh quarter, we'll be able to report on the comments initiatives. I mean, this submission closes tomorrow. And then uh by uh by next quarter as well, uh I'm sure we'll have had the first episode of our podcast. And then we will be able to uh tell you how it went if you are not present. All right, so yeah, that that's it from Marketing Guild. Thank you so much.
And you, looking forward to see those uh mascot submissions. Um yeah, without uh slowing down, let's um head over to writers. We have connection in the house.
Hello there, hello Peter. I am.
Oh, yes.
All right, um hello, everyone. And uh yeah, writers' workgroup uh October has been really good. Uh we put out a couple of uh drafts already. And uh pending some discussions of miss, some of our major discussions, we have started an ecosystem digest. Which is going out weekly now, another addition to our um rolling content, basically in terms of Twitter. And also, we've tried to focus more on the ecosystem page. We have uh two drafts already on mid-June. And we have one more AME draft coming up soon. Also, we might need to complete about uh two drafts regarding units. And they newly um designed DMS onboarding uh platform, basically. So we actually have more content to us that too, and also covered the mind legs episode. Uh a couple of contests coming out, uh must that'll be next month, actually. Also, we, on Twitter, we have recently launched the communities. As a community is a new uh section, basically, on Twitter. I will be sharing the link in chat here for everyone interested in joining the community. Uh there is no, it's not gated at all, so just uh click to join and you'll be a part of it. And hopefully, everyone can start dropping uh sharing uh knowledge and information, basically, and connecting. Uh they're right there on Twitter. And uh yeah, from the writers' workgroup, we've actually tried to, we've not unburdened anyone. It's not part of our uh portal list of to board this time around, but we're trying to fine tune our processes. And regarding uh some discussions on budgets that we had for roll over uh outstanding payments from last quarter. We actually made a decision to cover that uh within our quarterly budget already. And we are setting up our processes to ensure that the rest of our budget can help sustain our deliverables for the rest of this quarter. And uh yeah, so basically everything. Already completed and pending publication. So yeah, stay tuned uh for more.
Nice. Thanks for keeping it short. And yeah, proper, good initiative on those communities. I did look into it a little bit. Um I'll join it. Um I imagine uh spamming it, sending it uh to the ambassador general would also be a good thing. Um all right, then video work. Let's see who is in the house to represent. The house is getting a bit smaller over time. Um I started putting chat, we'll we'll have to hop back to enforcing a little bit like. Three to five minutes uh limit uh per workgroup, because with the amount of workgroups we have, one hour just doesn't cut it. Um. Can you see, I see you?
Yeah, can you?
Yes, perfectly fine.
All right, uh I'm gonna be very quick for video work. Um this month, we looked at a lot. Uh we have a lot of videos in the pipeline, um which. Um, this month, we looked at a lot, we have a lot of videos in the pipeline, which are currently in progress. Uh, some have been done and are scheduled for. Uh, we also were currently testing the social media automation tool that was created by Rojo from I and D Guild. Uh, it's working fine, and we've pushed that to to writers' work group. And trying to resolve whatever challenges that comes on the way. So currently, we're using the tool for to schedule our posts, and so far, it's been all good. Um, also, we also looked at shots, so we actually had to create an allocation for. For members creating shots from scratch, rather than getting, um, what do you call it? Getting important contents from long videos, so that was also discussed within this month. And going forward, we are also trying to get a new social media account, we are working on having a Mastodon account. So it's, it's in progress, and I think within this month, before the month runs out, we would have set up one for publishing videos. And we have so many AI tech, tech representatives on Mastodon. And Mastodon is a very good platform for AI enthusiasts, so that's all for video.
Awesome, nice exercise. And then, unless there's another sheet with more workgroups, but I don't think there is, we get to the last of the list, but not the least one, being the African guild.
Yep, wish I could say my stop words now, so and so I really stay, I really stay in time, yeah, so basically, it's been an engaging month. Uh, for us, I mean, we're still building on the successes of the Bunto and AI events that we had, and. We've committed, committed the majority of the months to resource development, so we have been able to. Create a conference paper, the proper M and E reports, and we're working on educational materials as well. Videos and infographics as well, we should be training out on medium and several other channels when you're ready. Yeah, and then we've also developed a couple of case studies and articles for publication. Yeah, and then we're, we're also a developer, started the initial phases, a research for development of indigenous tooling for Africa. Um, we have set up a team for that, in the current, in the going to research, and we're looking at. Um, pushing for collaborations when the outputs are ready, and then we go into tool development. And yeah, we also have our act community thing session, that's AMA session coming up next month, and plans are in progress. And yeah, we're practically centering the session around the. Um, you know, Africa's narrative, pushing Africa's narrative in the context of our strength intelligence as well. And what, what solutions can no better suit the African, the African markets, you know. The African perception and stuff like that, yeah, so. We're looking at that, we're gonna have, you know, speakers join us, and lots of very interesting activities there. And we're protecting November twenty ninth most precisely, yeah, so that's basically that from the African guild, yep, thank you. Just I kept you brief.
It was very brief, thanks a lot, and I did not mean to push the last couple of presentations to be way shorter than the initial ones. It was mostly intended that future tunnels, because, well, it's just what happens, right? At the peak, we had about twenty people, now we have seven people remaining in the room. Uh, of course, there's the recording, so that will be the main audience, but yeah, it's just, in general, I hate running over the slot, and. By now, we managed to do twenty four minutes. So yeah, the, I mean, this is a different one than, than the regular tunnel, but. Yeah, should just avoid, maybe we need to extend the slot by thirty minutes, so people know what to expect at least, yeah. We'll have to figure it out, and maybe touch on this during the workgroup sync call on Thursday. I do think that brings us to the end of the session, there's clearly no time for open topics and questions, maybe if it's, if it's a five second answer. Then you can ask a question, but otherwise, please, let's move that to Discord. Um, so yeah, thanks all for, for sticking until the very end of today's workgroup updates, Dan Hall. And yeah. Unless I see anybody in the room raising hands or quickly wanting to ask something, I think that's a wrap. Ah, yo, I see you, I'm muted.
Yeah, I want to say goodnight from here, I'll go to say goodnight.
We have time for that.
Alright, bye, guys.
You too, have a nice remainder of the Tuesday. Cheers.